Good evening, everyone, and welcome back from our summer hiatus. It's our first meeting back after our summer break. So, thank you all for coming out tonight. And I, for one, am happy to be back with everybody. So, we're going to change things up a little bit today because in less than two weeks now, we have the remembrance of 9/11. Many of you know I was a firefighter. I was on duty the day of 9/11. And that day will always be part of my memories. I know it's probably part of all of your memories as well about how, where you were, what you were doing, what you thought, what you felt. I had the pleasure before 9/11 of having known some of the people who were killed at 9/11, some of the firefighters. I had gone to seminars with them. I knew the first firefighter who was killed that day. I had met him and talked to him, had dinner with him. Since 9/11, I had the honor of getting to be friends with a firefighter who was buried at 9/11. He was buried twice from the collapse of the buildings. And he survived. He's not doing too well because of all the things he inhaled that day. But 9/11 is personal to me. I knew some of those people. But I also remember what I felt when 9/11 happened. I felt how we all pulled together as a country. And I felt, I remember how people would treat each other after that day. Somehow, we've lost that along the way. But I think we need to remember how we all felt after 9/11, how we are all Americans and all part of the same team. So with that, I wanted to call out the Fire Department and Police Department Honor Guards to help us with our pledge of allegiance. If you can all please stand as they come in. Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. You can all please be seated. Madam Clerk, can you please call roll?
Councilmember Billa Peña?
Present.
Councilmember Adam?
Here.
Councilmember McNamie?
Here.
Mayor Proton Jones?
Here.
And Mayor Engler?
Here. We have a couple of presentations tonight to do. Happy to make these presentations. I'd like to call up Dusty Russell up to the, from Economic Development, one of our analysts, to please come to the podium for a special presentation of one of our new business recognition programs.
Can you hear? Thank you and good evening, Mayor and City Council. Earlier this summer, the Economic Development Division introduced a new business recognition program to the community. The program is designed to highlight one exceptional Thousand Oaks business each quarter of the year for special achievements or other unique contributions made to the city relating to economic prosperity, sustainability, resilience, or other activities fostering continuous community enrichment in Thousand Oaks. More specifically, submissions must demonstrate accomplishments relating to one or more of the following: longevity in the city, business growth, unique community benefit, product or service, environmental sustainability leadership, and/or contribution to community Awardees receive formal City Council recognition and are presented with a framed certificate and an award winner decal that they can display in their business window. They are also spotlighted on the city's website through our social media channels, and they're highlighted in our city's monthly Economic Development newsletter. Lastly, they will be mentioned during the city's annual State of the City address. Tonight, we would like to introduce and recognize our first program award recipient. The Latino Market and Grill has been a staple in the city for over 30 years. Located at 711 East Thousand Oaks Boulevard, over the years, the Latino Market and Grill has expanded to encompass four suites of commercial space. They serve the community as both a grocery store and restaurant, offering a diverse selection of fresh produce, meats, and other traditional goods from Mexico and South and Central America. They employ between 15 and 20 people and are passionate about sharing their delicious foods and culture with anyone who walks through their doors. There's so much more that can be said about the Latino Market and Grill, but I'm afraid it'll make me a little hungry. So, at this time, Mayor Engler, I'd like to invite you up to say a few words and to present this award on behalf of the city.
Thank you, Dusty. Yes, it's with a lot of pleasure that I make this award. At this time, I'd like to invite up Michelle Ahumada. One of the principals here of the Latino Market Grill. We're so glad you could join us tonight. It's nice to be able to honor some of our local businesses. I must say, I have had some of the tamales from your place, and they are to die for. So, thank you. Thank you for being here in town. Thank you for everything you've done. Your story embodies the spirit of the American of this award perfectly. Your longevity, the growth you've experienced, your resiliency, and the cultural enrichment you bring to our city is truly exceptional. We are honored that you call Thousand Oaks your home. And tonight, we celebrate your history, your success, and we wish you many, many more years of success into the future. Congratulations.
Thank you.
These probably won't show up too well on camera, but these are the window decals. And then, I'm happy to present this framed certificate of recognition for the business. So, thank you so much. If you'd like to say a few words?
Thank you, yes. Thanks to the Mayor and City Council for the Business Recognition Award and for making Latino Market the first recipient of this award. We are grateful and motivated to continue to serve the city of Thousand Oaks. And special thanks to all of our customers. Special thanks to our leadership team, Rosendo Zaragoza, Miriam Calderon, Sabina Moreno, Martín Romero, and Carla Paredes for the hard work and dedication to serve the city of Thousand Oaks, along with everyone who belongs to the Latino Market family. Thank you.
Would the council members like to join me out front for a few photos? Before we get into our regular agenda, I just wanted to take a bit of personal privilege. Over the summer, we had an event that occurred that I thought was very important for our city. For a number of years, we've been working hard to address some of our homelessness issues. And many of you have probably heard by now that the city, through hard work and dedication and perseverance, was able to secure almost a $27 million-plus grant from the state for a project Home Key project in Thousand Oaks. This is one of the more significant events in our city's history. It will represent the first attempt in east Ventura County to start concretely addressing homelessness. And it would not have been possible without the staff who did great work over a period of several years, our City Council who backed the effort. It's also due to, in large part, to our Assembly Member Jackie Irwin, who we're now calling her the Velvet Hammer because she was pounding the desks up in Sacramento to make this happen. The county of Ventura also is coming in with money and, and coming in with people who will help us give the types of services that these folks need. We're looking forward to working with our developer, Shangri-La Industries. We're looking forward to working with our purveyor, Step Up on Second, who will help administer the building. It's a real milestone for the city. We're going to have a groundbreaking here in, I don't know, a few, a few more weeks, maybe a month, and then we will get busy and make this happen within the next eight months. So we can have people housed within eight months. So a real feather in the cap of the staff, hats off to them, and a real nice thing for our city going forward. Now, with that said, we can start getting to our, to our, our business. We have a consent calendar. I'm sorry, public comments. I've been off all summer, okay? So I'm sorry. We have public comments, and public comments, and I'll turn that over to our, our City Clerk to make the announcement.
This is a time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. 16 individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes. The yellow light displays when you have one minute remaining.
Very good. We do have some speakers. Our first speaker, and if we can, if, if I call several names out, if you can kind of start lining up in front here so that we can, you know, save as much time as we can. So our first speaker up is Lauren Brazulia, Brazula, followed by Adam Haverstock and George Rosenthal. Lauren, is Lauren here?
Via Zoom.
Yes, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, it was via Zoom.
There we are. No, you're good. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
Good evening, City Council members and attendees. My name is Lauren Brazuela, and I am a resident of Thousand Oaks. Firstly, I would like to thank the council and the attendees here today for permitting us a few moments to emphasize a severe problem that has directly impacted my family. We are here because we were shunned to find other means of emergency veterinary care from VSEC that advertises itself as an emergency center. From their cold shoulder and refusal to seek common ground to their refusal for an honest discussion, I am here today advocating for this change. Our dog Ollie had a severe and traumatic injury to his head region at 4:30 PM on a busy Friday afternoon as I was leaving work. My husband cradled our injured Ollie and frantically searched for the nearest emergency vet. A quick Google search provided the vet services of VSEC, Veterinary Specialty and Emergency Center here in Thousand Oaks. He walked in with our baby in dire need of help, and he was told there was no veterinarian on site, nor were they close enough to provide emergency medical services as they were actually on vacation. Ollie was crying and yelping loudly from the considerable damage and pain. Desperately, my husband attempted to persuade the staff to assist him in any way, begging for a piece of gauze to manage the bleeding or something to secure Ollie to protect and prevent further injury while he traveled. But unfortunately, the requests were held on deaf ears as he was coldly denied any support. With Ollie in his arms, my husband would make it to the Oaks Veterinary Urgent Care in Agora Hills in time. Not only was this emergency clinic able to take Ollie immediately, but they were also able to determine that expedited surgery was needed quickly, and they performed many hours of life-saving surgery late into the night. We do not know yet if the doctors could have saved his eye in the time spent searching for an emergency vet capable of performing emergency services that night. My question to them and you is this: Why not change VSEC's business title to reflect the nature of its services accurately? Why do they not present a clear description in the name of their company and hours of operations that they can accurately describe what services can actually be provided? But I ask you, who will stand with the families affected by this? Who will advocate for us in the community to do what needs to be done? Others who share a sincere concern for the safety of our animals have bravely joined us at our rallies in front of VSEC. Unfortunately, many of them also believe they may have lost their animals here because of their decision to bring them to this facility, which is heartbreaking. I can spread our story within my capacity to the fullest extent possible. I believe our cause is a just one, and I will do everything I can to prevent this unnecessary risk in our community from continuing. Thank you for allowing me to raise awareness of this serious issue. I am only one person, and I cannot carry this burden alone. I encourage every caring pet owner who wishes to aid in protecting our loved ones to join me as we continue to attempt to foster open and honest dialogue with VSEC and address these issues and our requests.
Ma'am, time is up. Thank you so much.
Sorry, I can't look at my screen and read at the same time. My apologies.
No problem. Next up, next up also on Zoom is Adam Haverstock, followed by George Rosenthal in-house, and also then Suzanne Schmitz.
Thank you, Mayor Angler and council members. My name is Adam Haverstock, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism at the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce, here with a report from your chamber. This month, the chamber hosted the Second Annual Caneo Valley Job Fair. The job fair is a new event that was created to assist our employers who are trying to fill vacancies in our tight job market. This event was on August 10th at Los Robles Greens in Thousand Oaks, and it was a huge success. Dozens of businesses and many job seekers attended, and some were interviewed on the spot. Thank you to the city of Thousand Oaks for being a partner in that program. Next, I wanted to tell you about our Small Business Stories project. This is a partnership between the Chamber of Commerce, Union Bank, and the Rotary Club of Westlake Village Sunrise. The chamber is producing videos featuring Caneo Valley small businesses. We are telling their stories and putting a human face to these businesses. And all of them are businesses that struggled through the pandemic and have great stories to tell about the community support that helped them stay in business. Three of the businesses that recently filmed are Oak and Iron, Grab a Green, and Hub Bike Shop, all in Thousand Oaks. The video for Grab a Green is already live and can be found on the chamber's website, canehochamber.org, on our social media, or in our newsletter. The other two videos are in post-production and will be going live soon. Next, I wanted to give you a save the date for the chamber's Taste of Caneo. Mark your calendars for Sunday, November 6th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM. This year, Taste of Caneo will be at the Higher Regency Westlake, which is actually in Thousand Oaks. And this is the first time that we are hosting Taste of Caneo since 2019, before the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. For those that haven't attended, Taste of Caneo is the chamber's annual food, wine, and beer tasting festival held each fall. We are expecting more than 60 tasting vendors and up to 750 attendees. Finally, I wanted to give you a few quick updates on tourism. Visit Caneo Valley is seeing our highest room revenue since we started tracking it in 2014. The revenue per room even exceeds our previous highs made pre-pandemic in August of 2019. In the month of August of this year, so far, revenue has been about $130 per room per night district-wide. This is much higher than the $110 per room we budgeted for, and August is peak season for our hotels. With the additional revenue, we have greenlit some new projects for Visit Caneo Valley. Number one, we have done an update to the hiking trails section on caneho.com. We have added more information about the trails and incorporated maps from alltrails.com. We also printed a trail map.
I think your time is up.
Oh, okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. In-house here, we have George Rosenthal, followed by Suzanne Schmitz and Miller Vargas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is George Rosenthal, and I am representing hundreds of homeowners in the senior mobile home park of Vinto Villa, Vinto Estates, Newbury Park. Our lot rent has been capped at 3%, 2.5% to 3%. The 10-year rent moratorium has ended. This year, it changed to 8.5% CPI Consumer Price Index. That's correct, 8.5% CPI Consumer Price Index. The CPI is not going down anytime soon. In fact, yearly increases will continue to be compounded year after year. The council did not differentiate between family and senior parks. A family park would have two or three working individuals with multiple incomes, while the senior parks usually have one individual on Social Security. Seniors have to pay utilities, trash, groceries, phone, home insurance, health insurance, gasoline, car payment, as well as huge increases in everyday expenses due to inflation. Many are struggling to get by with only Social Security. The seniors own their mobile homes, but they could be forced out with lot rents approaching $1,000 per month. Council needs to amend the ruling and put a 3% cap on senior mobile home parks lot rent as it's been for the last 10 years. Keep the status quo at 3%, not triple it for seniors and force them out on the street. We have 100-plus homeowner signatures right here. We've gathered in just a few weeks. We are trying to keep seniors who own their homes from losing their homes and being not put on the street. The council and park owners made a moratorium that covered the last 10 years. Why would that moratorium be dropped in light of the disastrous skyrocketing economy now? The city attorney here stated to the Ventura County Star, "It was a shock to everybody." Why was it a shock? You voted on it. You passed it. The attorney said, "Any future of amending the ordinance has to be approved by the owners." Why? They already got their input into this at 8.5% when they decided to gouge the seniors who can't even afford medicine. I sat with many of these people in their kitchens, 80- to 90-year-old seniors. They told me they had to sit at their kitchen table and decide, "Are they going to buy medicine? Are they going to buy food? Are they going to pay rent?" The senior park home, it was stated in the Star that the council members are always responsible to what avenues they can explore to a system.
Mr. Rosenthal, that's, that's, your time is up. I'm sorry. I appreciate a very good speech by Mr. Rosenthal. However, we try not to clap because it slows down or distracts our next speaker. So be kind to our, be kind to our next speaker.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Schmitz from Thousand Oaks. I'd like to remind the council about Responsible Development on behalf of many citizens who agree with me. Recently, 1,000 high-density units were approved in a hotel at the Janes Mall. The city needs to step back. They need to review the plan for the next 25 years. How do we envision our city? Developers must not be allowed to remove oak trees protected by the general plan and replace them with 3.1 non-native 15-gallon trees requiring water. 68% of Californians say water supply is a critical issue for us, and they're not happy with our state and local governments on how it appears you are rolling over this mandate with no infrastructure or plans. The Governor's 19-page plan does not go into effect till 2025. This city must pause and further high-density developments until this water supply infrastructure is in place. There's a projected loss of 10% of our state's water supply in the next two decades. Developers must use gray water and plant drought-resistant landscape. We can still energize Thousand Oaks Boulevard and include Mar Park Road with street enhancements, but we must fill higher capacity of our retail. There are too many empty retail spaces. We need to watch 299 and 1710 to see if this mixed-use model actually fits in our community. It may not be best for our city. There is an election in November, and we need council members and county supervisors who support open space, oak trees, families of all ages, singles, members of Responsible Development and Safety as well as Economic Growth. The use of special plans needs to be audited by an independent source since way too many protected oaks are getting removed by this backdoor loophole. Affordability must be real. $7,000 a month for an apartment is not affordable. For the same price, you can get a four-bedroom home in Westlake Village. We need to rein in inflation, although it may be painful for our developers. Really look at the target renter. It's not a recruiting tool for singles but for families who work in our doctor's offices, restaurants, small business, cleaner houses, retail establishments, and grocery stores like Tino Market. We do not want to become like Idaho, where it becomes so unaffordable that the labor lives on the outskirts of town in motorhomes and cars. Finally, with this drought, the city council must budget for the tree trimming costs and removal of non-native dead trees. Look around our town. The mature branches are going to begin to split, fall on roads, power lines, houses, and parking lots. Up to 25% of our tree canopy is going to die in this drought at the end of the year. Let's remember to keep our protected oak canopy as it was created for drought and Santa Ana winds. Finally, Tuesday is Tree Day. Every city bus, vehicle, and letterhead has an oak tree on it, and you're responsible for our oak trees.
Appreciate it. Okay, our next speaker, followed by Jerry Barnett, our next speaker is Miller Vargas. And then followed by Miller, I'm sorry, Jerry Barnett and George Senko. Go ahead, sir.
Hi, guys. What an honor. Also to back up George, because we live in the same area. And unfortunately, in my case, because I live by myself and I'm retired, with that increase in the rent, when I moved in there two years ago, they increased it by 10%, and now I'm going to be going to a 22%. And that affects my income. Obviously, what do I, what am I going to buy? What am I going to have? Do I have to buy enough groceries? Do I have to pay for my car insurance? Do I have to pay for my, my home insurance? Do I have to pay? What am I going to do from these increases? So I just wanted to let you guys know that is for the, for the retired seniors that live in these areas in the mobile homes, is the increase on these, on these rents are a little bit on the, they are super expensive side. So thank you very much, all of you guys, for all your cooperation in our city.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. Jerry Barnett. We, we, we don't, we can't do the questions, ma'am. Okay, I'll make sure that the people speak into the speaker because that helps sometimes. Okay. Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Barnett, followed by George Senko.
My name is Jerry Barnett. I'm from Camarillo, and I appreciate you allowing me to speak. I'm not a resident of Thousand Oaks, and I congratulate you on the funds for Home Key. That should help some issues. I'm here because regarding the rent that's affecting some of my friends, your actions regarding rent affect me in Camarillo. Your actions regarding rent affect the Future Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers of the Los Angeles area, of which Ventura County is a part. And I'm one of those urban consumers of the Los Angeles area. It's my understanding that residents of Thousand Oaks are being impacted by the Consumer Price Index from March of 2022. The all, and it's based on the all items of the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers. And it was 8.5% in March for all items. One component of that index is housing. One component of housing is rent of primary residents. The rent of primary residents component of the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers in the Los Angeles area for March was 3.4%. Rent of primary residents is one component of the CPI-U that kept all items, CPI-U, from being above 8.5%. By allowing the rent to be based on all items, CPI-U, I hear you saying that you want the, you, excuse me, you want the price of food, gasoline, electricity, and natural gas to drive the inflation of rent. Is that really what you want to say? I hear your rent ordinance telling all the urban consumers of the entire Los Angeles area that you want inflation to be higher than it is. Is that really what you want to say? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. Next up, we have George Senko, followed by Karen King.
Thank you for the opportunity to address you, Mr. Mayor, Honorable Councilmembers, City Staff, Legal, and meeting attendees. Concerning TO mobile owners' rent increase desperation, our right to participate in negotiation and capping of those increases was overlooked. We ask for your due diligence in getting... Righting this wrong. My name is George Senko. I live in the Thunderbird Oaks Mobile Home Club and share my fellow mobile homeowners' disappointment. We feel betrayed. We weren't included. When the 10-year rent increase measure came up for renewal in June of last year, we thought renegotiation would be part of the package. And that discussion was tabled sometime in fall, when it never came up. We asked for a cap at that time of 5%. It was never addressed. It was promised to be addressed in the fall. It never came up. Your inaction on mediating renegotiating has disastrous results. We are faced with a rent increase of 8.5%.
Okay.
TO TV, if you can show what's on the LMO, please.
Excuse me?
Sir, if you could put your first document back, it didn't get shown on TV.
Do you want to see the first one? The 8.5% increase primarily is based on energy, not land. Other uses, such as primary residence rental, as Mr. Barron pointed out, was only 3.4%. We're not just renters, we're homeowners. More than 900 mobile home units represent, at an average of 200,000 per homeowner, 180 million in ownership that is represented here. Now, that 100 million, 80 million, is larger by two or three times what the landlord has invested in it. Mobile home population is roughly 60% ladies, 20% men. And the average social security income of a lady is 1,300 a month or 15,600 a year. And the Ventura County points out that between 12,000 is acutely low for a single person and 26,3,500 income is extremely low. Landlord is imposing an 8%, 2.5% rent increases, price gouging, just like Big Oil. The city won't want to unilaterally cap the CPI, but it should do the right thing and mediate negotiation of a cap on the CPI.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Karen King, followed by Pat Postmeyer.
Good evening, City Council Members and City Staff.
Ma'am, yes, pull the mic down. Thank you. Just pull it toward you.
Can you hear me?
Much better. Thank you.
Oh, you can hear me. Good evening, City Council and City Staff. My name is Karen King, and I live in the Thunderbird Oaks Mobile Home Park. Before I begin, I would like to tell the council and the city staff that I have provided copies of the documents that I'm going to reference tonight, and I would encourage you to take a look at these. I'm speaking tonight for myself and on behalf of 116 Thunderbird Oaks residents who have signed this petition, 116 of your constituents. Many more people asked to sign the petition, but time ran out, and I am sure you will be hearing from them in the future. The petition asks the city council to begin the legal process to amend the rent stabilization ordinance to add a 5% cap on the 100% CPI figure that is used to calculate our annual rent increase. To support the residents' petition, I reference a table that is published by GSMOL. The table lists cities and/or counties in California that have a rent stabilization ordinance. 92 California cities and/or counties have a rent stabilization ordinance. 77 of these municipalities use some percentage of the CPI to calculate annual rent increases. 41 of the 77 include a fixed cap on the CPI. These caps range from 2% to 10%, with 5% being the most common. This table demonstrates two important points. First, it's not unusual or unrealistic to include a cap in rent stabilization ordinances in the state of California. Second, mobile home park owners can and have agreed to include a cap in rent stabilization ordinances. I'd like to make one final point. Only 10 cities in California with a rent stabilization ordinance use 100% of the CPI with no cap to calculate their annual rent increase. Thousand Oaks is one of those cities. We need to change that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Pat Hostmeyer.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here tonight representing the Ranch Mobile Home Park. That park was built because the owner wanted to build Thunderbird Oaks. He was allowed to build Thunderbird Oaks as long as he would build the ranch as a low-income housing. It's still a low-income housing. There was a cap of 5%, and it was removed. I'm here, just like everybody else, wanting to put a cap, especially for our low-income We have... There... I don't know if there's anybody here from the ranch, but our seniors are... They're quiet. They state of themselves. They're elderly. They have many medical issues, and we've been referred to as, from the ambulance that come into the park, we've been referred to as God's waiting room. And so we don't cause any problems, and it's a lot to pay your space rent, your trash, your sewer, your groceries, your medicine, for one. I pay over 500 a month for my medicine, and I'm very fortunate that I can afford to do that, but it's barely, I'm telling you. And it's hard to get increases for these seniors, and I would really ask you seriously to please bring back that 5% cap so we don't have to worry and go through all of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up, we have Karen Haskin, followed by Susan Colkins. Everybody gets three minutes, whether you use it or not, so that's... We don't allow transfer of time. Your choice.
Hi, my name is Susan Colkins. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council, for allowing me to speak tonight. I am a resident of Newbury Park, and I live at the Ventu Villa Mobile Home Park. Thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm here to add a voice to the issue of the exceedingly high 8.5% rental increase imposed at our area mobile home parks. And I talk multiply, like Thunderbird and Ranch and Ventu. Anyway, you've heard also all the statistics, and if you didn't know that before you got here, you certainly know it now from Mr. Rosenthal and others. I'm 63 years old, while my husband is 72. While we can afford the increase, many of our neighbors cannot. They are senior citizens on fixed social security incomes. They did not get an 8.5% pay increase on the social security checks. My neighbors and area residents have enjoyed a peaceful existence who may actually already be living check to check into their 80s and beyond. They cannot go out and get part-time jobs to pay for their sudden increase. The raises vary from $65 to $90 a month. It's so easy to provide for low-income housing for prospective residents, and we want to do that, and we want to make sure we can do something about the homeless. But we can't sit idly by and forget the mobile home park residents who have lived here for decades. They patronize our local businesses as well as utilize much-needed services in their daily lives. Many of these residents don't even drive anymore. I visit many of them. I implore you to rethink the increase before causing chaos and disruption in the lives of our mobile home park residents who may need to leave because they can't afford the increase but would have no place to go. Please let them live out their golden years in peace and without financial burden. They earned it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Kristine White, followed by Becca Whitehall.
To the mayor and city council, thank you very much for letting me speak. I am Kristine White. I live in Thousand Oaks Mobile Home Park, and I am a 37-year United States Army veteran. And I moved to this park in 2017, knowing that this is a retirement park. It was a 55-plus, and most of my neighbors are in their 80s now. They've moved there since 1976, and this is their life that they live. And I thought, as being a military-retired veteran, it would be a good place to live. And I'm really interested in keeping the cap at a 5% rate due to the fact that I have a military pension after 37 years, and that increase was... Took 22 years to get an increase. So it just doesn't happen overnight. It's just not an automatic thing, and it's not an automatic thing for our seniors. So I'm trying to represent our seniors that live in Thousand Oaks and all the other parks, and hopefully you'll understand that, and I appreciate you listening to me. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next up is Becca, followed by Ryan Stone and Glenn Berry.
Boy, I'm a lot more comfortable behind a pen than behind a microphone. For those of you who don't know me, my name's Becca, and for the last almost decade, I've been reporting for the Acorn on most of the things that happen in this room. But recently, I've accepted a job still with Acorn on the other side of the grade, so I won't be reporting here anymore, and I wanted to take the opportunity, the first time being up here, just to say thank you. It's been a pleasure getting to know everybody and working with the staff, who was just top-notch, from Jamie and before John Adams, explaining to me what unfunded liability is, before then explaining how the city was going to address it, to the planning department who explained the whole Measure E. The whole Measure E, I would say recount, but Tracy would kill me. City planners who I would call last minute at deadline and say, "By the way, what's the height limit for that zone? I need it for a story." I think Steve Kearns was on my speed dial quite often. And to Tracy and her staff, who would have the patience of saints to explain a legal issue that the city was facing. And of course, all of you, I think there's supposed to be this separation of church and state between the reporters and those that are reporting on. But after eight years, you can't have... Eight years of laughing together and celebrating things in the city and mourning and grieving together, you can't help but develop friendships and respect, and I just wanted to thank you all for the last eight years. So thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Becca, and good luck in your new assignment.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment?
Let's get through our other folks, and we can make a comment.
Can I just say one thing to Becca?
Let's get through our people first, and then we'll have a comment. We'll have a comment point. Just one... Hold on one second. We've got Ryan Stone, followed by Glenn Berry.
All right. How are you, council? All right. So I hope everybody can hear me well, and I applaud you guys for getting your $28 million for homelessness. I hope that some of that $28 million may work with our citizens here as well. So my name is Ryan Stone. I'm a business owner and a resident of Newbury Park, and I'm here representing about 10 families, 13 children between the ages of 5 and 17, seven of which I believe are female. And I want to talk to you about... The reason why I'm here is talking about halfway houses that are moved in my neighborhood. And I live in Dos Vientos, less than 500 feet away from a K-6 school. And the reason why I know this is because I had the gumption to go up there and ask them where they were from, and they were kind enough to tell me that they were, you know, from LA in a halfway house and sober living in their driveway. Now, come to find out, there's about 17 of these operations, drug-addiction homes propped up here in Thousand Oaks alone as a money scheme, collecting thousands per head, abusing the system and creating a hazard in our residential areas. There's drugs that are currently being smoked on that premises where I live, as well as others. My neighbors have already been there. Apparently, right now, there's six people in that house, all from LA, which what appears to be one, all but one, who is a drug addict. So now, clearly, we've allowed this to happen since, you know, there's been more around the community. And so I'd like to point out some of the facts that we... That may be unknown, since they actually don't require a license in order to operate. We don't know what the charge is. Could be a sex offender, could be a drug addict. We don't know what the record they have. They're not supervised. Sometimes it's been caught in previous instances as a drug house. And they're also known as the quickest way to scheme insurance money due to lack of operational guidance. So doing a deeper dive, the person who owns multiple registered business names involving drug addiction housing, who is now... Who has been sued by the Beverly... The city of Beverly Hills, is in the same very situation that's three doors down from my house, say that he's moving a family into the neighborhood, not drug addicts, for a profit scheme on my seat... On my street that we see every day. So now, I'm certain that I speak for those who are in this county who may have the same issue going on. It definitely is something that is definitely not tolerable to allow in our community, and from a sincere, common-sense standpoint, these homes are filled with addicts under no supervision, operating without a license, around our kids, still doing drugs with my neighbors that I have witnessed. So there have been several counties that have gone after this issue and won due to constant ambulances being called, drug overdoses, fighting in the streets, et cetera. And as many as my neighbor can attest, and I have firemen here that can attest as well, is an EMT fireman says that this is going to happen, and I honestly work too darn hard where I'm at to see this in my neighborhood as well, in my community. So the reason why I'm here is to ask you to support your community and the very kids that are scared to walk along the houses now, and stop this ridiculous profit scheme and pray that nothing... Nothing happens to those 13 kids that are on my block, especially my daughter. Please, I'm begging you. I'm ready to... I'm ready, and I'm available to discuss. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Glenn Berry, followed by Jeff Briggs.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
For the opportunity to come up and speak. I'm a mobile home owner, and I'm also with a manager with GSMOL, which helps stand up for the rights of people with... Who live in mobile home parks. And so I work with people in mobile home parks throughout the whole county of Califor... The whole county of Ventura, and have been working with several of them in Thousand Oaks recently, and their biggest concern right now is the rent increases. And my mobile home park is in the county, unincorporated, so they raise 100% of our COLA for social security. So then they increase our Medicare, and all the prices go up, and we are behind every year more and more. But at least we're a lot better off than Camarillo, who doesn't have rent control, rent stabilization, not rent control. And as a result, they raised their prices on two of their... Rents on two of their mobile home parks in Camarillo by 100% this year. mobile home parks in Camarillo by 100% this year. 100%. Seems like Thousand Oaks is headed in that direction and not, in lifting the cap on the CPI. CPI, we don't know how high it's going to go, but it can go quite high. And again, I've seen people in my park, which, you know, is the 5.9% increase. Not all, not all mobile home parks took that. About 12% said, "We'll take a little bit less, and I'll take 100% of your increase." But most took all of it, and it's much worse in Camarillo and much worse over here in Thousand Oaks. So, you know, really, I've seen people even in my park having to move out, no place to go, having to go back, live with family. Family doesn't really want them. They don't want to live there. They want to be independent. They want to, you know, have their own place, but that just wasn't the case. Now, some people might say, "Well, why didn't we work harder, have more, have more, you know, retirement and things of that sort?" Well, I have a master's degree. I was a professional. My wife had two master's degrees. We both had our own businesses. You know, I was an executive director for a long time for large companies for residential care communities, and a professional trainer for many, many years throughout the whole state of California. So what happened? My wife got cancer. My mom got cancer, bankruptcy, losing our home, and ending up in a mobile home park. And we thought, you know, my wife and I were supposed to be traveling through Europe right now, but it didn't happen. You just never know what's going to happen in life. And, you know, and this is, this is what's happening, but, you know, we can't afford these increases. Someone said something about 9/11, how people were looking out for each other. That lasted a few months, I guess, but it doesn't seem worth it to go there anymore. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. We now have Jeff Briggs up, followed by Jeff Schwartz.
Thank you, and good evening. My name is Jeff Briggs. I live in the Sunset Hills area. My wife and I moved here from Hollywood just before the pandemic. And by the way, for our foresight, we'll be handing out lottery numbers after the meeting. I've been involved in dealing with homelessness for both the homeless and taxpayers since I chaired the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce for two years in 2007 and 2008. I'm a lawyer for many small businesses and business groups still in Hollywood. I just continue to represent them from afar instead of amidst because of the dystopia that LA has become. My goal in speaking to you tonight is to help you prevent Thousand Oaks from reaching that same level of dystopia. I saw it happen in Los Angeles before our very eyes, and I know how very quickly it can happen. I applaud the plans for a permanent supportive housing facility at the former Quality Inn by the Oaks Mall. I know many in the community are anxious about having that facility in their midst, but I've seen many iterations of these in operation, and I'm confident that nobody will really know it is there. It'll probably be even more calm than most apartment buildings. It won't be an attraction. Those on the streets, who are living on the streets elsewhere and are with it enough to know that it's there, no, they also can't get in. So it won't become an attraction. I also applaud the Thousand Oaks Police Department's Vulnerable Population Squad and various community nonprofits who work tirelessly to try to help get help to those who need and want it. But one thing missing from the strategy is a temporary shelter. As you know, in its absence, Thousand Oaks is not able to enforce its anti-public space camping laws. We have not yet experienced significant street encampments in Thousand Oaks because we have a lot of open space in which people can hide. But recently, the Thousand Oaks Vulnerable Population Squad of the police have been, with Caltrans and others, have been very successful in closing down a number of encampments in some of those open spaces. As we learned in Hollywood, when we closed down a number of open, of public space encampments in the Hollywood Hills, eventually, those people will end up on our streets. And as you know, we can't make them leave the streets if you don't have temporary shelter. I beg you to please make temporary shelter an urgency, a priority. Our police and social service providers need to be able to offer the homeless a shelter bed in order to keep them off our streets. It will help those who need help and want help, maybe not immediately, but over time. Meanwhile, those resistant-
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Jeff Schwartz, please.
Good evening, mayor and council members and city staff. I'm Jeff Schwartz from Thousand Oaks. One important feature of good local government is that citizens, public officials, and civil servants share ideas amongst one another. I would like to share with you some information and ideas related to a concept that's not always talked about. The topic I'm referring to is called market urbanism. For those who are unfamiliar with this term, market urbanism is a policy theory that applies free-market economics to urban issues. It's a study of urbanism from a free-market perspective. It was inspired by influential economists like Adam Smith. Market urbanism is also an urban policy package based on these principles of free markets and free-market economics. Proponents of this approach ask the question, "How can market urbanism ideas be applied to cities in order to reform and potentially improve public urban policy?" A good book on this topic, published less than a year ago, is called Market Urbanism: A Vision for Free Market Cities. In this book, the author makes the case for a number of major reforms in urban planning, including housing reforms and transportation reforms. Rooted in free-market economic scholarship, the book proposes that cities might be able to work better by harnessing the results of bottom-up private sector activity of many individuals as opposed to top-down government plans. In the book, the author describes how free-market ideas can apply to housing, transport, and public administration. The book's goal is to portray a vision where cities could potentially be better-run, more affordable, and easier to get around in using a market urbanist model. I would strongly encourage some of the people involved in running the city of Thousand Oaks to consider taking a look at this book. I'm Jeff Schwartz from Thousand Oaks. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. That is our last public speaker for public speaking. Mr. Jones, you had a, you had a comment. Thank you for waiting.
Well, I was just going to say, since Becca now understands Measure E, I wish she would take about a half an hour and explain it to me, so then we'd both understand it.
Thank you so much. Did you have a comment as well? Yeah, go ahead.
I'd just like to say, acknowledge, Becca, I so enjoy reading your articles. They flow so nicely and fairly represent what was presented. No bias at all. You're a wonderful reporter, and I hope you take that and instill that in the people that would be looking to you as an editor of the Camarillo Moore Park Acorn. Thank you very much.
Here, here.
So, just wanted to say congratulations, Becca, on your promotion. I know you will do very well. We'll miss you here.
I got to chime in.
Go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Thank you, mayor. Becca, always appreciated a call from you. Sometimes when the press calls, I cringe, but when I know it's you, I know we're going to have a good chat together, and I like the way you write unbiased, good factual stories. So we're going to miss you, but you're going to do a great job in your, in your new post. So I hope to be reading a little bit from that area, too. Great job, Becca. Thanks.
My only comment, will your phone number remain the same? I've got it on speed dial. Very good. Thank you all. We now are going to go to our consent calendar.
Do you want Ingrid and I to respond?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, go ahead. We do have response from our city manager.
Thank you. First of all, you know, I want to thank you all who came tonight to discuss concerns regarding rent increases at mobile home parks. The city understands the economic pressure facing our residents. You know, those who reside in mobile home parks, and actually those in all other housing types in the city, everyone is struggling. Costs for vital needs such as food and gas and utilities have really, and housing, have really impacted everyone in our community, and the city is acutely aware of that. With respect to mobile home park rents, it's a really complicated matter. You know, the city's rent stabilization ordinance that sets forth the entire formula for rent increases has been in place since 2011, the exact formula. And that formula itself was negotiated and agreed upon by mobile home park residents and owners. The city didn't create the formula, and the city has not changed what the residents and the mobile home park owners agreed upon in 2011. Now, most years, as we know, I think one of the gentlemen showed a graph, and most years show that CPA, CPI is much lower. And obviously, this year, with the inflation factor, it is much higher. But the city's rent stabilization ordinance was negotiated by the residents and the owners, and at this point, as where we are today, as long as those rent increases comply with the rent formula, the mobile home park owners are legally entitled to impose those increases. They aren't mandated to do it, but they are legally entitled to do that. And I'll turn it over to Ingrid for a few more comments.
Thank you, Tracy. And again, I'd like to just emphasize, we really appreciate you all coming out tonight, and we empathize with so many of you during these highly unusual economic times. This item, the rent stabilization ordinance, is not on the agenda tonight. And this city council, we're required to comply with the Brown Act, and as a result, the city council cannot discuss the item tonight. However, we have received multiple emails. We have been in conversations with our city council, with many of the residents here tonight, and we are prepared, staff is prepared, mayor and city council members, to bring an item back to you at our next city council meeting on September 13th. This will give us an opportunity to more clearly explain the negotiated agreement that our city attorney mentioned, that was between the park owners and the residents, which serves as the basis for this rent stabilization ordinance. And then at that time, the city council will be able to discuss this matter in detail and also provide direction to staff on what the next step should be. And mayor, I'd also like to address the other public comments as well.
Sir, unfortunately, we can't take questions from the crowd.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
We, we, we can't take questions from the audience, so I'm sorry. Go ahead, Ms. Hardy.
Okay. So there were, just to address the first speaker, Lauren Brazewell, and I apologize if I mispronounced her name. The city does not regulate veterinary services or businesses, and I recommend that she contact the California Veterinary Medical Board to file a formal complaint. We also had a comment by Suzanne Schmidt, and I'd like to have her speak with our Director of Community Development, Kelvin Parker, who can address her concerns in greater detail and answer any questions she may have. In terms of the comments by Ryan Stone on the halfway houses, these businesses are heavily regulated by state, and cities have little to no control. Due to the criminal activity that Mr. Stone mentioned, I'd like to have our Chief of Police, who is in attendance tonight, Jeremy Paris, speak with Mr. Stone directly. So he will step into the hallway to speak directly with you, Mr. Stone. And then lastly, with regards to sheltering, from Mr. Briggs, he and I have had several email communications, so thank you for being here tonight. Sheltering has been and will continue to be a priority for the city council until it comes to fruition. The city council did direct staff to work with the developer to find a location for an emergency shelter, and that has been our number-one challenge. I'm happy to discuss this further with Mr. Briggs. I believe you still have my email address, and I can give you additional information. And that concludes my comments. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Hardy. Ms. Bildelpenya.
Just a quick comment. I know how difficult it is for seniors and elderly to come to City Hall. I appreciate you all being here tonight, but also be aware that you can participate via Zoom if you're able to. That would be more practical for you. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, now we're going to move on to our consent calendar. We do have one speaker, but I'll entertain anyone who wants to pull any items. Ms. Bildelpenya.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
Very good. Very good. We do have one public speaker on our consent calendar. Let's see if we're having, yes, we do. Mr. Clint Foltz.
Hello, my name is Clint Foltz. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks and a member of the Keneo Climate Coalition. I'm commenting on Item C of the consent calendar. I'd like to first thank city council, city staff, and the city manager for approving the previous installation of electric vehicle charging stations at the Dial-A-Ride parking area of the municipal center at 1993 Rancho Caneo Boulevard in Newbury Park. Thank you for making that happen. Transportation accounts for 62% of our community's greenhouse gas emissions, and the move to electric vehicles will help reduce our reliance on fossil fuels while decreasing pollution and the greenhouse gas emissions that contribute to global warming and climate change. The installation of three electric vehicle chargers at the Newbury Park Library and the four EV chargers at the Grant Brim Hall Library will be an excellent addition to our city's growing EV charging infrastructure. These are both great locations for EV charging stations, and will help community members top up their batteries while utilizing our city's excellent libraries. Quick shout-out to the librarians and the staff at both locations. Thank you for the work you do. The EV charging stations at both library locations will provide community members who live in apartments that lack EV charging infrastructure the ability to charge their vehicles in a safe and convenient location. And for people who typically charge their vehicles at home overnight, this will allow them to use daytime renewable energy provided by the Clean Power Alliance. I'm asking city council to please authorize the acceptance of SCE grants and the approved budget, and to approve the budget appropriation for the aforementioned EV charging station installations. We're in a climate emergency, and every fraction of a degree of global warming matters. Let's do the right thing for our community and help provide a livable future for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foltz. We do have a motion to approve our consent calendar. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill Della Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamie?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. Let's take a, just a five-minute standing break as everybody exits from our earlier discussions, and then we'll get on to our department reports. Okay, we'll get back to it. Councilmember McNamie will be with us shortly. What we will do is start our department reports. Our first report up is our water shortage emergency measures, and we do have several of our staff members here to help present it. We have our Dr. Helen Cox, who is our Sustainability Division Manager, and we also have Cliff Finley and John Brooks, as well as Tracy Friedel, to help us with any questions. So if you could please go ahead, Ms. Cox.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. I'm here this evening to present a resolution modifying the permitted time for irrigation and an update on progress towards meeting our water conservation target. Also with me this evening and available to answer your questions are senior analyst John Brooks and Public Works Director Cliff Finley. As you're aware, during the ongoing extreme drought, there are insufficient supplies from the State Water Project to meet the normal demands in the Metropolitan Callejas service areas this year. Emergency action was taken by Metropolitan earlier this year, first to secure emergency supplies to meet health and safety needs, and then to adopt an emergency conservation program. On May 24th, council declared a Level 4 water shortage, which brought with it a number of conservation measures aligned with the Metropolitan mandates, including the one-day-a-week watering limit. The city's ordinance specifies a 15-minute watering limit for use of spray sprinklers. Metropolitan requires us to change this to a 10-minute limit effective September 1st. The resolution before you affects that change. As a reminder, there's no time limit for using drip irrigation systems. We also wanted to remind folk that they may only water one day a week regardless of whether they're using drip or some other kind of irrigation system, and that watering must take place before 8:00 in the morning or after 6:00 PM in the evening. Hand-watering of trees and shrubs is only permitted to keep them alive and must not be abused or used to water lawns. This chart shows the performance of the Metropolitan agencies that are served by the State Water Project, i.e. those subject to the current mandate. Fortunately, the service area as a whole is meeting the required target. As a result, Metropolitan has deferred a decision on a complete outdoor watering ban, but will be reviewing performance monthly at their board meeting. The earliest now that a ban could be put in place is in October. Although Metropolitan as a whole is meeting the conservation target, our region served by Callejas is not. As of last week, the local agencies were 14% above the district's target. We are indeed fortunate that the other areas have more than met their target, or we could be facing an outdoor watering ban immediately. It's time for us to step up and do our part. This table shows the monthly targets and performance of all local agencies served by Callejas. All three agencies serving the city of Thousand Oaks, and you'll see those marked by, the red box is the city, and the orange ones are the other two agencies serving our local area. They're all over the 106 gallons per capita per day, or GPCD, August target. The annualized target is 80 gallons per capita per day, but monthly targets reflect seasonal variation. As of the end of last week, customers in the city's own service area used 145 gallons per capita per day, or 37% more than the 106 target. In the Cal-Am service area, which covers the western part of the city and Newbury Park, usage is 78% over the target. And in the Cal-Water service area that includes Westlake, usage is more than double the target, or 164% above it. Even though the community has reduced water use by approximately 30 to 35% relative to the prior two summers, clearly, there's still a lot of work to do. The city's water agency is taking enforcement of the watering restrictions very seriously and has devoted considerable time and effort to developing and implementing the necessary tools. A GIS-based monitoring and tracking system with a mobile app is used to record violations in the field. The citation process consists of a door hanger posted at the violation address and followed up by a letter. A trained and expanded customer service staff at the municipal service center and at City Hall answered dozens of emails, online inquiries, and phone calls every day, and a review and appeals process have been implemented. Citations to date have been based on violations observed and recorded in the field. Most recently, we began issuing warnings based on analysis of hourly metered water flow data, where high flow rates on non-irrigation days have been recorded. This in-house dashboard allows customer service staff to review citations, photographs, and observations, and respond to questions from residents. To date, over 1,200 violation notices have been issued. Most of these are warnings, but 145 include fines. Residents are subject to a flow restrictor should a fifth violation occur. All entities with four citations are individually contacted by city staff. So far, no flow restrictors have been installed. As indicated earlier, Metropolitan agencies that are served by the State Water Project are meeting the current mandate overall. Two of them are well under the use limit, two are on target, but Callejas is one of the two districts not meeting its target. It's vital that the community step up conservation efforts. Even though many homeowners have let their lawns go brown and are making every effort to save water, too many residents and businesses are not taking this shortage seriously and not fully complying with the regulations. The city has made every effort to get the word out. We have run full-page ads in the Acorn newspaper for the past few weeks, co-sponsored by our sister agencies, and will continue to do so. We have a dedicated website at t-oakswater.org where all pertinent information can be found, and we've given webinars, utilized e-newsletters, mailings, letters, and social media to spread the word. Moving forward, we will be increasing the use of meter data to identify and seek out Water agencies not meeting their targets may be subject to a penalty of up to $2,000 per acre foot on water used in excess of targets beginning in December. At current water usage, this is estimated to be $300,000 to $400,000 per month for the city's service area. This is a significant financial penalty and will have implications for future rates. If current trends continue in our local sister agencies, Cal-Am and Cal-Water, because their performance in meeting targets is worse than the city's, their penalties will be much higher. Residents should be aware that these costs are likely to be reflected in future rate We're asking everyone to follow the watering restrictions, one day per week regardless of the type of irrigation system, unless you've been granted an exception by the city. Please visit our dedicated website at t-oakswater.org for all information. Thank you for your time and attention. That ends my presentation, and we're available to answer your questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. We do have some questions, I believe, from our panel up here. I'll go first with Mr. Adam.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, Dr. Cox. Where did you say we are with the GPCD, which stands for gallons per capita per day? Where are we now? What, was it 136?
So it varies from week to week. We get a status report every week, and the last week it was at 145.
Oh, 145, okay.
I think it was probably 136 the previous week.
And we're supposed to be at 106?
Correct, yes.
Where were, just out of curiosity, where were we before all this started?
Well, it's seasonal, so the previous month, which would have been the month of May, was probably not a good comparison. But if we go to where we were a year ago?
Yeah.
We were about 30%, higher usage.
Oh, higher than the 145?
Yeah, so we have saved between 30 and 35% over where we would have been in the absence of restrictions.
So we have made progress. It seems to me the key here is this conversion from spray to drip. And I know we gave the residents 60 days to do that, and I think the 60 days is up. Do any, Cliff, are you getting indications that the conversions are moving along?
I think that a lot of, a lot of people have made those savings, and really, it's reflected mostly in the lawns, mostly what we're after. And the reason for not allowing spray sprinklers is really because we don't want people watering lawns anymore, so it is fairly clear in the field when you're out there, you can, you know, if lawns are still green, then they're still being watered, and they would be being used, using spray sprinklers for that.
Mm-hmm. Yes, I know. I'm aware. I see, I see brown lawns and green lawns, most, hopefully mostly brown lawns, but, well, hmm, got to keep making progress on this because the, the consequences are severe. So when you talk about this $2,000 fine per acre foot, is that assessed to Callejas, and then they pass it on to us? Is that the way that works?
Yes, Metropolitan has a target for each of the districts that it serves, so the fines would be, would go to Callejas, and then Callejas would pass those fines on to any of its agencies. and then Callejas would pass those fines on to any of its agencies in accordance with what their use is above their target.
Yes. Well, residents of Thousand Oaks, it seems to me that the key is to convert from spray to drip. And you've got to give up the lawns. It's part of the past now. And, you know, it's not that bad. You know, they die, and then you come up with something else to replace them with, with this artificial turf, or maybe put in some stonework or something. But, you know, I don't know what's going to happen this winter, but I'm not particularly optimistic that we're going to get a deluge. So it seems to me that it's going to be an ongoing problem, so everybody's got to pitch in. Thanks for the info.
I'm going to go off to my left here now. We have Councilmember McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think the community appreciates what dire straits we're in in the water situation, even though we keep putting the word out, is that if we don't get decent water, not only for this coming rain season, but for three, four, five consistent years, we're going to be in a world of hurt. My concern is that, as I drive around, I see some commercial businesses who have decorative lawns. And it doesn't take a rocket science expert to figure out that they are watering their lawns too much. And correct me if I'm wrong, we're leaning on the water distribution purveyors to see who's violating and to notify. And so far, the notifications have been via letter or email. And I come back to the human bond, make a phone call. Call the owner of the property. Now, I know that some people have complained to the city of some of these larger commercial properties that have beautiful green lawns still, and at middle of the day, they're watering the lawn. And the city follows up, saying to the water distribution purveyor, "Why haven't you reached out?" They said, "Oh, yeah, we sent a letter. We sent an email." No response. So the city winds up having to get involved in an area they have no control over and calling the owner, who says, "I didn't know because I am not at that property. I'm located in the San Fernando Valley or wherever." So my question to you is an option, and this goes to Ms. Hardy, our Assistant City Manager. We have a lot of people from the city staff going out, either doing building inspections, doing landscape. We have a lot of employees that patrol the city, doing their normal daily job. Is it possible we can ask of them, as you're driving along, you see a green lawn, whether it be commercial or residential, write down the address, get it back to the city, and we will get in compliance very quick? Yes, we can look at utilization and how much they've dropped their water usage for that particular home. But I don't think it's too difficult, if one of the landscape people's out there working on our medians and keeping our city beautiful, that they see a green lawn and write down the address and bring it back and say, "Have they reduced their water usage?" Or perhaps we should contact the owner of that commercial property. Because if we get them all in line and complying like the rest of us, I could see us meeting our goals very quick. Thoughts, City Manager?
Sure, thank you, Councilmember McNamee. We do have staffing resources dedicated to the monitoring for compliance with our regulations. In terms of asking other city employees to do that, there are labor matters that we would have to navigate, so we just can't change someone's job description without going to the labor union staff.
So what we're saying is, "It's not my job."
Not that it's not my job, but we just have an obligation to comply with our labor agreements, and our city attorney may want to chime in.
And she is so good at saying, "Any idea I bring forward, no, you can't do that, Kevin."
I try not to say, "No, you can't do that," but Ingrid is correct. You know, and it's not just in the city context. You know, when you hire an employee, you hire them, and they have a job description, and they have duties. And anytime you expand those duties or add new duties, you have to evaluate whether you legally can do that or not. So, and specifically because our employees do have memorandums of understanding that set forth what we can and can't do, we'd have to go through those labor processes. So I'm not saying no, but what I am saying is that we can't just snap our fingers and say, "Okay, you're going out and taking pictures and doing all that."
I'm just saying, in the course of their day, but I follow that there's certain rules that we need to comply by, and you always keep me in line and tell me, "Kevin, this is the way the law reads," and I appreciate that. The other one is asking your people in the community, if you see a green lawn and so forth, perhaps report it to the city and take a look at the numbers and see if it's one where we need to have a discussion. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Bill De La Penya.
Before we go on, can I just quickly respond to that?
You bet.
First of all, we absolutely, as a department, and all of our staff that are out in the field every day, we absolutely send in those addresses, find that information. And when it comes to businesses and the big lawns, we have a long list, but we are contacting those business owners one by one, face-to-face, you know, not necessarily letters, but finding out who the contact is, the property manager, and talking with them. So, that being said, we do have a limited number of staff that are qualified and able to do that, but we are out there pounding the streets trying to get compliance.
So which is it? My city attorney says, "No, we can't necessarily," but you're saying, "Yes, we are?"
No, no. All I'm saying is, our staff are absolutely observant and are writing down addresses and giving them to the appropriate people.
That's all I'm asking for here.
Yeah. And that's not them going out and taking pictures and doing enforcement. We're taking care of that. And they are, as you suggested, eyes in the field.
Let me, Ms. Ingrid Hardy, that's what I was referring to. You're out there doing your normal task, and you see, "Oop, that's a really cool green lawn." Write down the address, turn it in. That's all I'm asking for.
My apologies. I misunderstood.
I thought you were asking for them to do the enforcement part of it.
No, no, no. It's just in the course of their day, they're driving by. "That looks like a nice lawn." Okay, they can't be in compliance, that's all.
I think our city manager, city attorney, were referring to reassigning people and that sort of thing. But yeah, I believe that Mr. Cliff up there says, yeah, they are being dutiful employees and looking at things.
That's what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Very nice. Ms. Bill De La Penya.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Actually, you know, you may find what you think is a green grass that's overwatered is actually dyed grass. I've seen numerous homeowners out there with a little spray bottle, painting and dyeing the grass green. So it looks like it's, you know, they're overwatering or watering too much, but in fact, it's just really green dye. And, you know, we do have patrol out there, even overnight, handing out citations. So I just wanted a clarification on the drip systems. So, Dr. Cox, you said that there is no time limit for drip systems. Can you, so if everything is on a drip system, can you then use it basically every day? Or still only one day a week, but longer than 10 minutes?
Yes, it only, there isn't a time limit, but it's still one day a week. And that's where we're running into a lot of confusion. We've had dozens and dozens of calls because unfortunately, there's mixed messaging from different agencies about that. But in Thousand Oaks, the rule is one day a week, regardless of whether you have a drip system or a spray system. It's one day a week, and the only difference is the time limit for which you can water on that one day.
All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill De La Penya. Mr. Jones.
Yeah, just a comment. When my wife and I drive through the neighborhood, we see green lawns and brown lawns. And based on the novel Red Badge of Courage, which the Red Badge was from the Civil War. If you have a little blood to prove you've been in battle, I call the brown lawns the Brown Badge of Compliance. If you see a brown lawn, it's their Badge of Compliance. Which didn't bring the house down, but...
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I do have a couple of questions.
This is a tough audience up here.
When you mentioned that we need to be down to 106 gallons per person per day, how is that figured? Is that figured across the entire Metropolitan District? Or just Callejas, just Thousand Oaks? How is that calculated?
That's calculated by Callejas based on their budget that they get from Metropolitan. So it's the same across the Callejas districts for people who don't have supplemental water, like other groundwater supplies or something else. So people in the Callejas district that are solely dependent on the state water project are at 106, but the other agencies might be a little bit different depending on other supplies.
So it's figured on basically the acre-feet-per-day type thing, divided by the population, more or less?
It's the total water that the city agency can use divided by the total population that the agency serves. So it will include the water use for parks, for example, and schools, et cetera. So it's the total water use in our agency divided by the number of people that live within our boundaries.
Is there any allowances made for size of property or residential type differentiations, like single-family residence versus apartment? It doesn't matter?
No, not at this point.
Okay. I think it's fair to remind everybody that the City of Thousand Oaks is served by three different companies, correct? And we are 28% more or less short of our goal. And my water company happens to be at 160% of goal. So is there any plan of how to balance that out with Callejas? In other words, is the entire area going to be penalized or just simply the water purveyor for that section of town?
So it would be based on each of those individual agencies and how far they are above the target. So in your case, your agency would suffer much higher, much more significant penalties than the city agency would, based on how far it is above the target.
And I have driven around town specifically, not so much looking for scofflaws, but looking to see what type of compliance we've had. I'm seeing quite a bit of compliance amongst the rank-and-file citizens. So I applaud our citizens for what they've been doing. There are a few commercial properties that I've noticed that, yes, they need to get with the program. There's, I have received some phone calls from folks who say, "Wait a minute. Two years ago, I replaced my lawn. I went drip. Now, there's no way I can meet this goal." Are we making allowances for those folks? Or is there anything that they, any remedy that they can come to you with?
Well, so we're not asking everybody to, you know, we don't have a mandate that requires a certain percent savings from everybody. Our mandate is on what you are and what the restrictions are. So as long as those folk are adhering to the restrictions, i.e., you know, only watering one day per day, per week at maximum, et cetera, then, you know, there's no penalties or they're adhering with the regulations. So really, you know, we're sort of chasing down the violators, the people that haven't made the transition, and the people that are still watering lawns, and the people that are not really paying attention to the regulations. And, yeah, for commercial, we're looking at turf watering because there is a statewide ban on watering non-functional turf. And we have sent letters to all the homeowners associations, et cetera. And we have called them. So we've, you know, talking about the efforts that the city has made to reach out to businesses and homeowners associations. We have been making phone calls, emailing, contacting all those people individually, letting them know the regulations, that they cannot water any turf without permission from the city, and it has to be functional turf.
And if my colleagues would allow me to ask a one or two more questions? I know we have our three-question rule. Go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Well, if there are no questions, is prepared to make a motion?
No, I have just a couple more questions.
What?
I have a couple more questions.
Oh, you have more?
Yes.
Oh, well, by all means.
I try to limit us to three questions at a time.
I see.
And if somebody else had more questions, I would have stepped aside. In terms of, we're at Level 4 right now of our water emergency actions. I understand that we are going to be pushed out at least another month or two for any further, given the results of our current conservation. If we go to the next level, there's restrictions on pool use and everything else, pool construction. Is there any thought of going with pool restrictions now since they also are users of water?
So if people adhere to the current restrictions, which require them to cover their pools, there would be very little water use from the pools themselves. So it's not really the construction of filling of pools, which only happens once, and there's not, you know, there's not a huge number of them that are going to be constructed. The issue is more getting compliance with the current regulations. So pools, it's very difficult to monitor because in general, they're in people's backyards. So getting compliance is more like trusting that people will do the right thing.
It's more of an honor system thing for pool owners, then?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, and this is more just an overhead question. This is, Mr. Adam mentioned it. If we don't get precipitation this winter, we may be in a real, have some real problems coming our way. Is there any thought from the governor to perhaps make a disaster declaration so that we can get some more help from the federal government or anything? Is there any talk that you've heard that perhaps we need to take the bigger step of working on getting ready in case we don't have rain this winter?
Well, I think the governor has announced some plans for some major measures in terms of addressing four main areas that need attention, the planning of water resources, better planning and distribution of those, more forethought. Then there's adding more storage for water, and obviously, reducing demand. So there's like four different pillars that he's working from, and I think he's assigned those priorities and budgets. I don't know about a further declaration in terms of emergency and getting funding.
Thank you, Dr. Cox. Very good. Councilmember McNamee, one more question. And then, Cliff, do you have a grand answer? Go ahead, Mr. McNamee.
Just, it's for Assistant City Manager, Ms. Hardy. Again, just to come back to my point, is that are the employees that go out on their normal daily duties asked specifically by their managers to please write down addresses, the inspectors, the landscape people, anyone else we send out? Is that part of their instructions to please do this? I'm still trying to get clarification on that.
I'm going to have Cliff Finley respond to your question.
Yeah, our public work staff and those that are, those that are out in the field have had that direction, and it's very easy for them to report back. We have not extended that to all city employees, but we, for the lion's share, are the ones that are out in the field every day.
Thank you all. Any other questions? Then I think that Mr. Adam had a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, yeah, we're being asked by Metropolitan Water District to decrease, for spray sprinklers only, to decrease the time that they will use per station from 15 minutes down to 10, one day a week. So drip, as Dr. Cox mentioned, did not have that restriction. So there's definitely an incentive to switch to drip. There's some cost involved, I will say that, but water savings is significant. We switched to drip, our water bill dropped by 50%. So I'm sure people will get different results, but it's worth it, folks. If you can possibly do it, it's worth it. So I would encourage you to take a look at that. And in the meantime, it looks like we have to comply with Metropolitan Water District, so I will move 10A on the restricted time for spray stations.
Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill De La Penya?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good. We're going to go on to our Section B of our reports. Allow our staff to change seats. Allow our, our staff to change seats and we will be getting to that in just one second. This is going to be on our overview of the school crossing guard program. Earlier this year, we discussed it at council and asked that the staff would please come back to us with some more information that we would be able to then digest and see what we would like to do. So I think we have staff in position. Very good. I do have Mike Hauser, our transit program manager, as well as Cliff Finley and Jim Please go ahead, sir.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. The item before you, as you mentioned, is a continuation of the item that we brought forth to council on June 14th. That was the annual crossing guard report to council that included recommendations for the closure of a number of schools that did not currently meet the standards that we use for placement of crossing guards. City council requested at that time that we return on August 30th. Thank you. Return on August 30th with a history of the program as well as an analysis and overview of how we've gotten to the current standards to which we use. Staff also took this opportunity to survey additional agencies to see how they manage their own crossing guard programs. Staff will conclude this particular report with a presentation and presentation with an update on the current crossing guard program since school resumed session here last week. There are currently 24 locations that city council has approved for crossing guards that service 15 elementary and five middle schools in the community. One of those schools is actually located in the county unincorporated area. 18 of these crossings are directly adjacent to the schools and six are down the street. Most of the schools that we service have one location per campus, but there are a few exceptions. Ladera and Lang Ranch Elementary Schools each have two crossed locations. Acacia Elementary School and Redwood, excuse me, Acacia Elementary School and Redwood Middle School share two locations. And there are three crossing locations for the Sycamore Canyon K through eight school complex. The number of locations that we manage has remained fairly steady, the last decade, plus or minus one or two to the 24 we have now. And that's down from a high of 39 locations in the late 1980s and early 1990s. 30 staff are the desired minimal staffing requirements for the program as council currently has approved it. And as of this meeting, our staffing count is at 28 that are hired or in training. History of the program, the crossing guard program in this community is almost as old as the history of the city itself. Council considered its first action on crossing guards within six weeks of city incorporation, in which they agreed to fund the crossing guard at the location of Herbs and La Granada, effective July 1st, 1965. And then also the following year, they approved a second location for what was then the Timber School District, a precursor to the current Canal Valley School District. Between the years of 1964 and approximately 1977, crossing guard locations were first reviewed by the Ventura County Traffic Safety Committee. And then, and those recommendations were then brought forth to the council, usually with the concurrence of the then city engineer or public works director. Then also in about 1977, this function converted into an internal process using the city's own traffic engineering staff. And starting in the late 1990s, these recommendations were first brought forth to the Traffic and Transportation Advisory Commission, and then finally to city council for final approval. And that's a process that has been in place for over the last two decades. Many staff reports reference a city council adopted standard for crossing guards in 1977. However, despite a thorough review of the minutes from all council meetings in 1977, staff is unable to confirm conclusively that city council actually took this action, nor is this, nor are the standards articulated in the city's municipal code. The oldest reference to the crossing standard, placement standards that we use today is 1999 from a report from the Community Budget Task Force entitled Minimum Community Standards. The report outlined the minimum standards for a wide variety of city functions and services and noted specifically for the crossing guard program that this was department practice and a discretionary decision. It's also important to note that city council has routinely considered requests for crossing guards additional review, additions or removals almost 100 times since 1964. So this is an item that is frequently in front of the city council. When looking at the standards of which we reply, we must first look at the California Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, which is California's version of the federal standards that govern the use of traffic control devices. Specific to crossing guards, it sets standards for placement depending on the type of intersection, the speed of the roadway vehicle and pedestrian volumes. And to quote from the manual, "Standards exist to objectively evaluate the potential need for crossing guards to assist students to find gaps in traffic flow to cross the street." Most municipal agencies surveyed use this standard as the basis for making crossing guard determinations. The city exceeds the standard by making it much easier to qualify for a crossing guard. And our, our agency is the only municipal agency surveyed that does this. It is also uncommon for municipal agencies to deviate from the MUTCD and the crossing guard program is the one notable exception that the city makes. In all other areas of traffic control, the city follows the, the state standards. The chart before you articulates the state and city standards, noting that the city, the, using the city currently approved standards that are in place, there needs to be only 20 school pedestrian crossings and only 300 vehicles in conflict with those pedestrians in both the AM and the PM to qualify for a crossing guard regardless of the type of intersection. By contrast, the state standards require twice as many pedestrians and more vehicle conflicts to qualify for a crossing guard. It should also be noted that our agency stations crossing guards at signalized intersections, which is contrary to state guidance. In order to develop these numbers and standards, city staff twice annually does counts at each of the authorized crossing location as well as those locations where a request has been made and staff deems that it may be, may be appropriate for a crossing guard based upon observation. When we do these counts, we endeavor to maximize the number of counts that we are able to obtain. We count all pedestrians in grades K through eight. This includes anybody on a skateboard, scooter, or bicycle. And we also count all vehicles that cross the crosswalk that conflict with those pedestrians. We do these counts in the fall and in the spring and we count two peak hours for each school, once in the AM and once in the PM. And in order to obtain the best possible data, we avoid counting during adverse weather, close to school holidays, and we even try to avoid counting on Mondays, Fridays, and those days where the schools have minimum or early release days in order to capture what is the true count. And under both standards, to qualify for a crossing guard, a location must meet the minimum thresholds for both pedestrians and vehicle volumes during both the AM and PM peak school periods. Using the count summary that was conducted in February and March of this year, and I would note that these counts were also very consistent with the last time that they were done, pre-pandemic in school year 1819, 10 of 24 locations would not have a crossing guard assigned to it based on the currently used city standards. And if we were to apply the state standards, that number would increase to 16 of 24 locations. We took this opportunity to quiz the other agencies on how they manage their crossing guard programs. Staff requested information from 17 municipal and school districts in Ventura County as well as some adjacent Los Angeles County. First question we asked is who funds the crossing guard program? Overwhelmingly, it is the city municipal agencies that fund. Two agencies, Port Winee and Ventura, share this expense with the school district. And in particular, the city of Ventura has a unique program where the city of Ventura only funds those locations that meet state standards. If the school district wants an additional locations that do not meet the standards, the school district has to fund that expense. Two school districts in Moore Park and Santa Paula directly fund their program and the county of Ventura responded that they do not fund crossing guards at all. It is a requirement of the school in the unincorporated areas to handle that expense themselves. I'll also note for the purpose of this slide that Moore Park is unique in that both the city and the school district maintain separate programs which they each individually fund. We then asked the agencies what the number of crossing guard locations are by agency. As you can note by the slide, Thousand Oaks is by far and away the most, has the most crossing locations. It's to be expected, of course, that the smaller agencies with smaller populations have fewer crossings. But I would note, using, for example, the city of Oxnard, which is larger in population, and the city of Simi Valley, who has about the same population and physical area of the city of Thousand Oaks, have significantly fewer crossing locations and each of these agencies apply the state standards to their determinations. We then asked the agencies about their budget. Now, not all agencies were able to respond to this question, so there are fewer agencies listed, but Thousand Oaks and the Ventura agencies have about the same budget at approximately $350,000. The cost for location varies between $8,000 and $25,000, depending on the agency. For the city of Thousand Oaks, that cost is approximately $14,500. Again, noting the unique situation in the city of Ventura, the cost to the city of Ventura is approximately $80,000 for four locations. And then the, the school district pays the balance of the $270,000 for the other 15 locations. We then asked them about their guidelines and how they make their determination. Seven agencies do not exceed state guidelines. In other words, they use the state standards for crossing guard placement. Two school districts in the city of Thousand Oaks have standards which exceed those state standards and Thousand Oaks is the only municipal agency. And as already noted, Ventura and Ventura School District have a hybrid. They apply both standards depending on who is paying for that location. That ends sort of the analysis portion of staff's presentation. Wanted to update you on the school crossing guard program. Recruitment of school crossing guards remains a high priority for the program and a difficult challenge. We ended the 21, 22 year school year short five crossing guards. And since that time, another six crossing guards have either retired, resigned, or were not able to pass their medical clearances, leaving us with 11 program vacancies. It's a reminder to the council, last year, we had two schools that went essentially the entire year without crossing guards because we were not able to recruit sufficient staff. Since that time, we have been able to fill eight of these vacancies and as of, as of tonight's meeting, but we will continue to have schools that do not have crossing guards assigned to them at this time. Those four schools as of today are Aspen Elementary, Banyan Elementary, one of the two locations at Ladera Elementary, and then finally, Medrona Elementary, which is the one school that is in the county unincorporated area. I'm happy to report that at least for the Ladera Elementary School, that crossing guard is completing their training tomorrow and will be on site no later than the day after Labor Day. We also have a guard selected for Banyan Elementary, but due to a personal emergency, that person is not going to be able to start until sometime in late September or early October. And we remain, and we're still recruiting for Aspen and Medrona Elementary Schools. And with that, staff is available for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hauser. That was a good presentation. Ms. Bill De La Peña?
Thank you, Mayor Engler. So the, currently the, the crossing guard program is fully funded until June of next year?
The budget is already established as part of the two-year budget cycle. Correct.
And, and there are recommendations to remove some of the crossing guards at some of the locations that don't meet the city threshold?
That's correct. Our report at the June 14th, the staff made a recommendation for five locations specifically.
Okay. Well, I don't have any additional questions, but given, I'm sure we have some speakers, but given that the program, there are no speakers? Oh, okay.
I, I currently, I have no speakers on this item.
Okay. Well, since the program was already fully funded, it would make sense to just have this go back to Traffic Transportation Commission for evaluation, policy evaluation, but go ahead.
Mr. Adam had a question?
Well, I, yeah, I think there's no imminent crosswalks that are going to be closed, correct? I mean, I know you made some recommendations, however, at this point, everything's going to stay as is.
Yes.
As long as we can staff them, of course.
Yes. That is council's current direction. So we are nearing to staff every location.
Right, which is an ongoing problem. Okay, so we're status quo there. And, well, it's certainly apparent that we're a pretty generous city when it comes to crosswalks. We have more than anybody else. We fund more than anybody else. Our standards are lower than what's required with this manual for uniform traffic control devices. Anyway, getting to the point, I, I agree with Claudia. I think this is a perfect job for the traffic commission. There's, there's a lot of moving parts here, different cities, different approaches. I'd like to see the traffic commission tackle this and come back to us with a recommendation so then we can, you know, sift through it and see if we want to keep the policy or change it or whatever, so.
I move to receive and file the report.
Hold on, we have, thank you, Mr. Jones. But one question down here from Mr. McNamee.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. I, I just want to concur that, yes, let's see what traffic comes up with and their recommendations and then come back to us for discussion and see which direction we want to go and make some choices at that point. I think that would probably be a prudent way to approach it initially.
I believe, Mr. Jones, was that a motion for us to receive and file or to refer to traffic?
Well, yeah, both. As far as we're concerned, yes, let the traffic commission look at it. I think that's very appropriate.
Very good. I, I see no, I seen, we seem to have a consensus up here already, but we would have to have a nice vote. Any other comments from my colleagues? One, one from Ms. Bill De La Peña.
I, I would support Mr. Jones's motion and also with the, well, I don't want to give a direction, but I would not want to veer from reducing the funding for crossing guard. I think that should remain a city responsibility. That would just be my two cents for now.
I, I would like to make a comment for me. I would like a comment.
Go ahead, Mr. McNamee.
Right now, right now on the floor, it's receive the report and the very, very well-done report. Thank you. Second is send it over to traffic to get input and ideas. And as far as funding, I'm looking for that to come from traffic. Do we continue with the program? Do we pass this off over a series of three, four years to CVUSD? What do we do? And that, that's the direction I would like to see it to go, to see what creativity we come out of traffic commission and see what they think.
I would, go ahead, Mr. Adam.
Well, I would just say, I mean, Claudia, if it's all the same to you, I wouldn't mind getting their, the traffic commission's take on the funding, one way or another.
Oh, certainly, but knowing that the school district is struggling financially, just wanted to point that out. But certainly, we will make, we will leave the, their recommendations to be made to the traffic commission.
Mayor?
Okay, so you have no objection for them to look at the funding?
They can, they can certainly look at this.
Okay, excellent. Great.
Mr. McNamee had another question?
We're all good. Just a comment, is that the school district actually has lots of money, it's just not allocated correctly. Our superintendent gets over $318,000 a year. We have five superintendents that get $230,000 a year. State only requires two assistant superintendents, not five. So it's not a matter of resources. In fact, my understanding, Mr. Finley, how was that received by the school district regarding partial funding? Were they, have they been approached, talked to about this and what were their thoughts?
You know, it's a good point, I think, but I, I think the, the direction that we really should go is, these are questions that are best answered at traffic.
I, I agree, but again, the point was. I, I agree, but again, the point was offered by my colleague that school's struggling with money, and I'm saying that, no, it's not a problem of money, it's allocation. So if we want, we can just move forward with traffic to come back with ideas and not put any funding strings, strings on it until it comes back to council is my, my suggestion.
I, I. Just want to give them as much latitude as possible.
For me, I think.
Come back with whatever.
The best we can do is ask traffic to take a look at it.
Yeah.
And, you know, whatever, whatever they take a look at, let's, let's have them make a good recommendation to us. There are, there are other things we could look at, some mechanical ways of doing things, crosswalks, you know, with, with flashing lights and everything else, bulb bouts. I would want all options to be on the table for traffic, so they can come back to us with some really good recommendations. Whether we pay for it, school district pays for it, there's a combination, you know, we could follow the Ventura model. Everything should be on the table, and I hope that we get a good set of recommendations from traffic.
Agree.
Mr. Mayor, since everybody's saying something, our, our bottom line should be the safety of the students.
Thank you.
And that should be our overwhelming desire here. And whatever it takes to have students safely cross streets to go to and from school should be our goal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, Mayor, can we move the question?
We, we have a motion. I think everybody has agreed on the motion, but please, Madam Clerk, if you can call the question.
Councilmember Bill De La Peña?
Yes, and thank you, Mr. Jones, for making that remark that the safety of our children is paramount.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
That's the end of our, our department reports. We do have a, nothing from our successor agency to our redevelopment agency. But we did have a National League of Cities Leadership Meeting in August in beautiful Atlanta, attended by myself and our legislative analyst, Mina Leba. Many topics were covered. This was a leadership position developing group that went back to Atlanta. There are many different looks at public safety, having to do with all, everything from how to reduce the number of weapons on, on the streets, to how to make sure that police responses are sending the most appropriate personnel. It was a very good set of topics. We will have a set of, of recommendations for moving with the National League's approach to public safety coming up in our next session. And hopefully, we can move forward with some very good ideas that were developed back in Atlanta. So thank you to the council, thank you to our, our staff for sending both myself and Ms. Leba out there to help represent the city and move some of the ideas that really make sense forward to our, our legislature back in DC. With that, we're coming to our closing remarks. Earlier this summer, I mentioned one of the good things that happened last summer. Earlier this summer, we had our good news from our permanent supportive housing project. A week or two after that, we had some very bad news, that we lost one of our leaders in our community, Carmen Ramirez, who is the supervisor from District Five. I knew Carmen. Carmen was a very good person. But I did not know her as well as Councilmember Bill De La Peña. We are going to recess tonight in Carmen's memory, and typically, as you know, we have, we have remarks made, but before I call Claudia over, we do have remarks about our next upcoming meeting and other plans from our assistant city manager, Ms. Hardy.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on Tuesday, September 13th. We will have a public hearing on the 2021 CDBG Consolidated Action Plan Evaluation Report, and we will also have a department report on the rent stabilization ordinance. That concludes my comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Engler. And as the mayor said, tonight, we are adjourning the city council meeting in memory of a distinguished public servant, Carmen Ramirez. We have experienced a profound and tragic loss of an extraordinary life and the passing of Carmen. Supervisor Ramirez, who served on the Oxnard City Council for 10 years prior to being elected, Ventura County's District Five Supervisor, was a passionate advocate representing the diverse communities of Oxnard. She was the chair of the Ventura County Board of Supervisors, the first Latina ever elected to the board, as well as the first to serve as its chair. Through her public service, she led efforts to prevent industrialization of the coastline, slow climate change, support disadvantaged communities, and advocated for the transition from fossil fuels to renewable energy. She was passionate about environmental justice and creating a better future for the city of Oxnard and, in fact, for all of Ventura County. Growing up in the city of Pico Rivera, Carmen lived as a member of one of the underserved communities, communities she came to champion. Graduating from Loyola Law School in LA in 1974, she began a career as a legal aid attorney for 20 years, primarily in Oxnard. And then, for the Ventura County Superior Court, as the coordinator of the Self-Help Legal Access Center. Supervisor Ramirez served as president of the Ventura County Bar Association in 1998, and was an elected member of the State Bar Board of Governors, and had a private law practice specializing in consumer and social security law. She was active in the Volunteer Lawyers Services Program Committee and the Lawyers Referral and Information Service Committee, and has been honored by numerous awards, including the Ben E. Nordman Public Service Award of the Ventura County Bar Association, the Rotary Club Paul Harris Award, and the El Concilio Latino Leadership Award. In 2012, Governor Brown appointed Carmen to the Commission on State Mandates. She represented Oxnard on the Ventura County Local Agency Formation Commission, where I have served with her for many years, the Ventura County Air Pollution Control District, the Ventura County Animal Services Commission, and the Ventura County Continuum of Care. She was elected representative to the Southern California Association of Governments and chaired the Energy Environment Committee. She was also trustee for the Colleges of Law for Santa Barbara and Ventura, and served on the Ventura County Community Foundation Board of Directors, as well as on the Ventura County Transportation Commission. Through her leadership and many accomplishments, Carmen Ramirez touched the lives of so many. Her legacy as an advocate for the environment and social justice will live on, and we will always be inspired by her life, work, and spirit. Rest in peace.
Thank you, Ms. Bill De La Peña, and thank you for honoring Carmen in that way. Very nice. With that, we will adjourn till our next meeting.